Good evening. We were just talking about how good my gavel is. My gavel was made by Shane Barker for me long before he was the councilman. And that was just to show you this gavel really works well. And hopefully, I don't have to use it too much. Welcome to our January 10, 2013 meeting. First one of the year. May I have a roll call, Ms. Sarcisi?
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Ms. Darrow.
Here.
Mr. Engel. Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Very good. I believe we are going to -- this evening, we're going to ask our council president, Nick Molnar, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which I will say the invocation. Nick?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to unify the United States of America into a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Albert Einstein said, "Learn from yesterday; live for today; hope for tomorrow." May we learn from yesterday's mistakes and challenges. Tonight may we live in the moment, taking into light how fragile life is. This evening, Councilman Engel is not with us because of the death of his wife Fran. I'd like to take a moment of silence in her honor at this time. Okay. This is our organizational meeting tonight. The first meeting of every year is the meeting during which time we elect our council president, council vice president. We appoint someone to the Planning Commission, and we appoint someone to the Parks and Recs Commission. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for council president.
Mayor, we need to backtrack to the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the December 13, 2012 meeting as presented by the Clerk of Council.
I'd like to make one amendment to that. Ordinance 92, 2012, showing that I had made a yes vote, I have made a nay vote.
Shoot, now I don't forget. I'm so tired. We're gonna hold off on the minute change till next meeting. What do I say, Josephine?
You're just gonna ask them?
Make a motion.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone the minutes until next council meeting for some changes that Josephine and I talked about. I haven't had time to really review them.
Then I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to election of council offices. Do we have any nominations for council president?
I'd like to nominate Ken Martin for council president.
Do we have any other nominations for president?
Do you need a second?
He asked for the second time?
No, do you need a second?
He said for the second time. He already asked for that? Now he needs something, yes.
We have a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none. You want to do this by roll call, Josephine?
Sir, any way you want to do it.
Roll call.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Congratulations, Ken. You're the new president. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Let me say at this time, I'm very appreciative for our past president, Nick Molnar. Nick Molnar stepped up to the plate very well when I had some heart problems in 2012. During 2012 and during my problems, he even came to my house. We discussed certain things that were happening in the city. He was always in the loop with me. He did a very, very fine job of representing council and the people. We've had countless discussions where Nick would call me and say, "Mayor, you know, this really needs to be taken care of." And you know what, folks? When Nick would say that, usually it was something that really needed taking care of. It wasn't some petty peeve of his. It was something that concerned our community. So thank you very much for being a great council president and stepping up to the plate. I knew I can count on you. I also know I can count on Ken, because Ken has always been very, very involved with the council and with the mayor. Ken and I have had many conversations lately in regards to issues that are very critical for our city. I know Ken, and I think he knows me by this time. We've been together about 10 years working together. And I know what will fly with Ken, and I think he knows what kind of would rub me the wrong way. And all of this is part of this big legislative secret society that we have, because we are looked upon to put everything aside and do what's best for our city. So I'd like to wish you the best, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I want to point out is I've been very, very fortunate to be part of a city council and administration that has been truly extraordinary. And the reason I say that is because we went through one of the most difficult periods in this country with our finances. In 2008, 2009, the city suffered a setback, but both mayor and council worked together to make sure that the city stayed solvent, and we are now on a very, very firm financial footing. Secondly, if you take a look at the projects that this council and the mayor have completed, again, truly extraordinary, a bridge over Route 82, a widening of Route 82, a free flow of traffic that's never been seen in this city. And that free flow of traffic will actually be vastly improved when, again, this council and this mayor decided to build a bridge over Highland Road, which will eliminate the pesky and very frustrating times when we, as residents, had to wait for a train. And it will also improve the safety of that area, too, where a young lady years ago was killed. And once that bridge is built over Route 82, I think you're gonna have a traffic situation in the city that is going to be so good that the residents are gonna feel as if they're living in a brand-new community. And I want to point out, too, Mr. Mayor, that we established a quiet zone in that area that was bothering a lot of people who lived in that area with the train whistles and so forth. So this council, Mr. Molnar, everyone on this council, everyone in the city administration, the mayor, can take great pride, because these are real accomplishments that improve the quality of life of our residents and provide a safe, stable, and very secure community for us to raise our families. And I think I don't need to say much more than that, Mr. Mayor.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is council vice president. Do we have any nominations for council vice president?
I'd like to nominate Nick Molnar for council vice president.
I'll second that nomination.
I'd like to nominate Rita for council vice president.
I need a second.
I'll second the nomination of Rita Darrell.
We have nominations and seconds. Are there any other nominations for council vice president? Hearing none. Roll call. Let's start -- wait, we can't have a roll call. My fault. All right, let's start with our counselor, Nick Molnar, first for the voting. Roll call.
Mr. Parker. Ms. Darrow. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Molnar.
Do we need to proceed with?
Given he received four votes. Yeah, it's muted.
Well, it looks like we have Nick Molnar elected as our vice president. Congratulations, Nick.
Thank you.
One of the things that everybody needs to be aware of is something I touched on with Nick a little bit earlier, and that is the council president is one heartbeat away from being the president. If something were to happen to me this year, the person who would take over running this city would be our council president, Ken Martin. So I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad, Ken, but I'm sure you can handle it.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have council representative to Planning Commission.
I nominate Rita Darrell.
Second.
Are there any other recommendations or nominations for Planning Commission? With that, we will close the election. All in favor of Rita Darrell? Roll call.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rita Darrell, congratulations.
Okay, I'll look forward to working with you.
Yeah, we will be working together a lot, believe me, because planning is one of the most important jobs in this city. Moving on to council representative to Parks and Recs. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Shane Barker.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a nomination and a second. Do I have any other nominations for Parks and Recs Commission?
Mr. Mayor, can I bring up an issue right now?
Absolutely.
I think Mr. Barker needs to show himself at the Recreation Center if he's gonna be a committee member there. And for the past year, I've been going there, and I have yet to see Mr. Barker on a treadmill, a Stairmaster, a stationary bike. What are those other things you have? The rolling machine, and what else, Angela?
Elliptical, sorry, Shane.
Sounds like he's challenging me.
At any rate, I think that I would like to amend Mr. Barker's nomination as the council's representative to the Recreation Committee, that he has to exercise at the Recs Center at least three times a week and show himself to be an example of physical fitness in our community, and that as a member of the council's representative to the Recreation Committee, he needs to live what he preaches and what office holds.
And I don't know if that's actually in our charter.
Well, Angela, if you ever do have a Shane sighting there, let's take a photograph with a date and time on it, okay?
All right, will do.
Thanks, Ken.
All in favor? Roll call.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations.
Sorry, Angela, your stuff again.
Also, I can tell you Shane takes very, very seriously what he does as far as being on the Parks and Recs Board, and is very opinionated in a way that's pro-Macedonian, so that's a good thing. All right, in this next section of the meeting, we're gonna go --
I'm sorry to interrupt. I know it's a formality, but we wanted to bring up the finance.
Oh, yes.
I think we're all in agreeance, and I'd like to nominate Mr. Engel to be our finance chairman. I think he does a fine job with our finances and helps steer us through.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Do we have any other further nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Dave Engel really is very, very conscientious and watches very, very well over the administration, over spending of money. I agree wholeheartedly with all of the things that are happening here tonight, because I think Mastoni will be a better place. Dave has also got a very good working relationship with our finance directors, so that's critical. All right, the next section of this meeting is comments by the public. I have a timer up here with me, so I just would ask you to remember that we do limit our time for your making public comments to five minutes. Also, you are required to sign in prior to speaking. Do we have any comments from the public this evening? And I see Sylvia Hannekin's first.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Hannekin. I live in Hampton Drive in Macedonia. I would like to make some comments tonight about the proposed ordinance number seven, which would basically repeal the changes that were made by the Charter Commission and by vote back in 2009, which decreased the number of council people to -- from six to five, and removed the need for a tie-breaking vote by the mayor. Number one, this particular ordinance, I think, is very consistent with what I've heard a number of the council members express, which they are legislative, and they should be in charge of legislation. I think having an odd number of people on council will guarantee that items can get resolved, and there will be a majority vote that will not require a tie-break. So I think there's a lot of value in that. I also agree with the comments that have been made about administration versus legislation and policy. The administrator of the city is clearly the mayor, and the mayor is clearly the person responsible for the performance of services by the employees of the city. But the council has a very strong role in taking the cities toward the kinds of things that are in touch with the people and express the people's will, and that's the role of the legislation, in my opinion. So actually, I think the change that was voted on, and it was voted two to one in favor of in 2009, I checked the numbers.
Oh, you mean the vote of the public? Okay.
Yes, the public's vote was two to one. And I noticed that you were a member of the commission, Shane, so you're familiar with the reasoning behind it. I think it was actually a very valuable thing, but even if it were subject to dispute, which of course all things are, it's already been voted on by the people. We are implementing it this year. That was how the vote went, and that's the projection that was done. And I think we should simply proceed with the will of the people, and when another Charter Commission comes into position next year, if there are concerns about these issues, there may be other changes that would be proposed to the charter. I've heard some people say that we should go to a council that is -- some of whom are at large and some of whom are ward council, which is they represent a specific area. That's something that I think may make some sense.
We did discuss that, actually.
Yeah. But I think all of these kinds of changes need a Charter Commission look, and I think then, if there is consensus or a direction that wants to be taken, there should be a vote of the people, and the people decide these things. And finally, the issue of how to manage the city, should the council be telling the mayor day-to-day what to do? The answer is no. Should the council have a review process to look at performance with the mayor on certain issues? Absolutely. The mayor should be establishing performance objectives, and the council should be looking at those with him to see whether those things are being met. But as far as day-to-day, the mayor should have the freedom to make the decisions that need to be made and to execute what has been given him to execute. But at any rate, my thought, ordinance number seven, is just actually overriding what the people have said just three years ago. So I don't think it's a good idea, and I think it's out of sequence with what we should be doing with the Charter Commission structure. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Sylvia, before you go, you heard the comments in there, just real quick. In fact, we can talk afterwards. What do you think about, instead of going to five, going to seven?
I think if you went to a structure like that, I think the only time that seven would make sense. Number one, this year, we've increased the cost of council through adding health care to their options. So that -- the consideration there is it's gonna cost more for each person, okay?
Understood.
The second issue is that if we do go to a seven structure, we have to look at it in terms of population. We have about 11,000 people in Macedonia. Queensburg has, what, 22,000, something like that? How many council members do they have? So looking at it from that standpoint, I think five is actually a pretty good number. And if we think that it's not enough, and we want to go to this idea of having wards and maybe an overall representative or a citywide election for some people, then yeah, I think that's a consideration that ought to be looked at by the Charter Commission next year. And think about that. My own view is, let's try what the people have already voted on, and let's move ahead. Thank you.
That's your summary. Okay. All right, next on the list is Kurt Lobbinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to clear to note that whatever my statements are, they're in my opinion. I'm here to speak about these inspections that are going on on rental property. Once again, I received a certified letter, $5.75, to send me this letter, and it says they're pointing out some points of sale inspections, point of sale violations that weren't corrected. My house isn't for sale. I'm not going for a point of sale violation if this letter says I'm not. Furthermore, it points out some things having to do with painting. Some things were corrected. I made an effort to put house numbers on, do a couple of things that Mr. Sacks said to do. I did that. However, now it says I must paint my house within 60 days, if not, I'm going to court. Gentlemen and ladies, and Mayor, December 19th, 60 days, comes into February 19th. I'm not going to paint in the snow. From February 19th to April 19th, another 60 days, I'm not going to paint my house in the cold and the snow. Now, this is ridiculous to send these letters out like this. I'd like to know how many letters were sent. I know there's rental people that have rental property that haven't even been notified yet about inspections. I don't know if I'm being singled out, but anyhow, that's happened. I don't understand why we have an assistant building commissioner that's costing money, driving around the city, doing these things. We can have somebody else do it, a senior citizen, or someone can go out and have a set of checkpoints, and this is why we want our property to look. I've also asked that, what do you want the rental people to do? I've asked for a set of criteria to be mailed to people at the last time. That hasn't been done, at least I don't have a copy of it. I'd like to know what you want me to do, so when an inspector comes, I want to know about it. The next thing is, I think the inspector ought to tell the property owner when he's coming. I heard one incident the last time, that some kids were in the backyard, they went screaming to mommy because there was a strange man in the yard. It turned out it was our inspector. People ought to know when he's coming. He ought to be wearing a vest that says, "I'm an inspector." I would think he would want to wear a vest so somebody doesn't take a pop shot at him. He needs to have an inspector thing on him, or some way to let the people know. There's point of inspection sales, home sales are being done in this community, one right after another, and I don't think point of inspection sales are being done. Now, that's important, I think, when you're selling a house. But I don't think you ought to be after the rental people, like me, insisting that I paint my house in the snow. Thank you.
All right, Kurt, what I'll do is try and have some answers for you that are written. We will have the questions that you raised in our minutes, and we'll go from there, okay? If not, contact me.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
All right. John, you are going to speak on the Longwood Manor Committee, but there is a question regarding the Longwood Manor Historical Society and pending litigation against the city. Does this have any effect on public speaking?
I don't quite understand.
I'm asking the lawyer, the fact that you're going to sue the city, or you have a lawyer looking at paperwork in regards to the Longwood Manor, if you should be able to address the people over our system.
Mayor, I believe that First Amendment gives him that particular right, but if there's any response to questions being posed to council or the mayor on that particular issue, I would probably advise all of you, as your council, not to provide that information because of the threat of litigation in this matter.
All right, so the groundwork is set. Mike's yours, John.
This is a -- I'm John Casmer. I'm president of Longwood Manor Historical Society. This -- I had prepared this as a committee report. Am I under the five-minute limit?
Yes, you are. And basically, to explain to everybody, in the past, we were giving volunteer committees chances to talk during our committee reports. Well, those are council committee reports. And in discussions with our law department and with the way the rules are written up, discussions regarding committee reports, when I asked for that, that's to come from council, not from volunteers. And so anyone that appears at that microphone will be limited to five minutes, okay, in the effort to keep our meeting moving along, because sometimes we get into these long dissertations that actually take us off the function that we're here for, and they can be had in other ways. So with that being said, I'm giving you all that time. I explained it as a freebie.
All right. Five minutes, I move now.
We'll start now.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, I will acknowledge what you said. I'm hopeful that we don't have to get into an adversarial situation with the city. We do feel that the city is responsible, and again, I know you're not -- you can't respond, but we do feel the city is legally responsible to maintain the Longwood Manor since 1984, when you accepted the property from the first mayor of Macedonia, and that you also acknowledged that in 2002, in the -- in a motion October of 2002, when you acknowledged that you would pay the utilities, the -- and maintain the utilities, the liability insurance, and maintain the house in the current condition that it was as of 2002. That was a motion, October 10, 2002. Okay, Mr. Engel moved for the purpose of clarification. Motion to freeze all city funds relative to the renovation of the Manor House was not meant to include utility payments, insurance coverage. meant to include utility payments, insurance coverage, and those monies necessary to maintain the Manor House in its current condition, seconded by Mrs. Tully. It was approved by unanimous vote, Ayers, Engel, Martin, Menhart, Molnar, Scruggins, and Tully. So actually, what you requested us to do in 2011 is what you are supposed to be doing. That being said, I hope that we don't have to get into that situation. It's a new year. I want to present what I feel is reasonable. We are willing to continue our efforts if you will give us an extension. We'll continue our efforts to get plans, to get work done, to maintain what we've already started to doing, such as paying our liability insurance for the Manor, if the city will recognize and acknowledge that it is legally responsible for the Manor House. We have a architect, that's point number one. Okay. Now, here's something I would like to put out, that I really would like input on. I don't know if you can do it or not. We have located an architect that could use the change of use plans on the Manor House. We would have to pay for that, as we did for the first repair we did, out of our own money. So I'd like some commitment, I would want some commitment, that we are going to get the extension to continue the work, at least for another 18 months. I feel that, I don't know where this all went wrong. I've been talking to people. I know, I've talked to Mr. Lobbinger and I've heard the perceptions about the Manor groups that were previously involved with the Longwood Manor many years ago, the disappointment in that. We are not the same group, okay? We are functioning more effectively. We invite council people to our meetings. We have been trying to cooperate and enact the, in regard to the ordinance that you passed against us, against the House. I have one more thing to say. I want to say, I did ask the clerk of court to read a letter to the council. I guess that's done at the end. And you do acknowledge you're going to read that letter. I'll let that.
They all have it and you still would like me to read it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they want it read publicly. Yes, please. And that was all that I had to say. I missed the work session. I understand that there was some statement made that I refused $300,000 from someone, from Councilman Martin, maybe. And if I did, I certainly missed that. I would accept it now. I don't know quite what he was referring to, if this was money out of the existing budget. We're not going to do the petition in the format the mayor wanted. I know you, the mayor did accept my wife's proposal to come down and work with the finance director to see if we could find the money in the existing budget. I think my time just expired. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Sisi, excuse me, Mayor. Did you pull the minutes when I?
I have them right here in front of me.
That wasn't the meeting, huh?
Oh. That was a few months ago. You're right. Okay.
Yeah. Actually, it was a few months ago and Mr. Martin offered some money and Mr. Trump.
That's when I said that I'd like to set up a $300,000. And Mr., the response was, thanks, but no thanks. So I just want to make sure that the record is correct on that.
Yeah.
All right. That's a very good point, but the minutes from the last meeting, and one of the things that we didn't want to get into was a long dissertation, again. But unfortunately now, I think we're going to have to bring up the minutes from the last meeting, even though they weren't approved, because in that meeting, it is explained very well, some of the comments that were made and the direction that, John, you could go in regards to getting funding. There were comments made by Mr. Martin. This amount of money you need properly restore the Manor House is prohibitive. Fundraisers can't meet the level of monetary need for this level of expense and there is no federal money or grants available for projects of this nature. Macedonia residents should be asked if they want the Manor House to be restored and if so, their willingness to support a levy to do so. Macedonia's current budget cannot sustain the cost of restoration or the cost of continued care and maintenance. Mr. Martin told Mr. Casmer, the only way the LMHS is going to accomplish anything is for the majority of Macedonia residents to agree to provide tax dollars through a levy. And now, John, you come back with this letter and come back with the tax that we aren't doing that, that we have, I mean, everything that Mr. Martin said is in the minutes of the last meeting. So as soon as they're approved, I hope the public will look at those, because we haven't had a meeting for a long time and maybe people forgot. Evidently, you forgot. One of the things that we dwelled upon was the fact that we don't have money laying around that we can use for that. We need to use money to do that which we are responsible for, and that's the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of this community, not the aesthetics, not the history. Health, safety, and welfare. So I need to reiterate that point with you, because evidently, as will come forward when that letter is read, I don't want it to seem all one-sided, like the city is denying you. And I don't really like the idea that you're demanding and actually threatening litigation or a lawyer. Really? This has been going on for 29 years. And we need to be spending money now to defend ourselves against that? That's all. I'm not going to get into any more, because it's unfair to you, because you don't have a chance to answer. But it should be pointed out that I think you were answered the last meeting and given ways that you could raise that funding, if the people of this community truly want it. Is there something I'm missing?
Yeah. According to this iPad, it shows that the minutes that we have.
We were looking for Martin's minutes that.
They weren't sent to you.
No. The minutes on the website.
Here they are.
No, not that.
No, no. The last minutes that are on the website are June 14th.
June 14th, right.
They've not been downloaded, uploaded, reloaded. They're not on the website. They were within the last several months. And I'll make sure that you get them.
I was just looking for the one he had stated about the $300,000.
But minutes go on the website when they're approved?
Well, I usually do them in bulk and the first half of the year is on the website.
But if somebody wanted to know what happened in November.
Well, they can just come to me and I can get it to them, Mr. Miller. It's not a problem.
Well, yeah, it is a problem, because they shouldn't be six months behind.
Well, I mean, I think it's cost effective to do it the way we do it. Is that the reason why we do that?
We can get them any way you want them. We'll get them on there.
Is there a cost associated with doing that more quickly?
No, not at all. It's just, I send a couple of them at a time.
If a citizen looks on our website and it's not current and up to date, reasonably current or up to date, June is not reasonably up to date. I'm sorry, that is unacceptable.
Mr. Miller, they'll get on there and I will get, find, so noted.
Unacceptable.
So noted.
All right. Moving on, we're going to go right into our regular agenda for legislation, starting with ordinance number 99-2012.
I would like to offer ordinance number 99-2012 for its second reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance requiring that all new ordinances and resolutions brought before council of the city of Macedonia include, A, identification of the originator of the ordinance and/or resolution, and B, identification of a member of council sponsoring such ordinance and/or resolution.
Moving on. Ordinance number one, 2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance one, 2013, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment of Tracy White to the position of full-time dispatcher.
And what's your pleasure?
I may with the passing post, ordinance one, 2013, for its, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ordinance number one, 2013 passes. Again, John, have you anything to say in regards to Tracy? Explain to people she's been working with us for a year.
She's been working a year now. Excuse me. Does a fantastic job. This was her first dispatching job. She's on nights, so she's obviously not here. She'll come in 11 o'clock, but she does a wonderful job. Very friendly girl, grew up in Macedonia, does a very nice job for us.
So now she is an official employee. As you can see, it's our policy for employees to be on probation even when they're hired. Nothing's for sure until they prove themselves. And she does a great job and that's one of the hardest jobs that we have here. Moving on to ordinance number two, 2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance two, 2013, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment of Shane, Sean Hathaway, to the position of full-time police officer.
And what's your pleasure?
I was getting a new job, Josephine. I'd like to.
Pass and post.
Oh, yeah. Pass and post, ordinance 2013, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Barker. Mr. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number two, 2013. John, a little bit about Sean.
Sean's also on nights. He is off tonight. Sean came to us from Springfield Township. He was part-time down there. He's now full-time here. We're glad to have him. Sean is certified in meth labs and we do have meth labs here in Macedonia, so it's very helpful to have him on the department. Very active young officer, very smart, very smart young man.
Yes. Good man. Very good. All right. Moving on to resolution three, dash, 2012.
13, 2013.
It says 12, but I've been fooled. That's all right. I'll say it's 13. I changed it. Everything's okay.
I'd like to offer resolution number three, 2013, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
You need a second. All in favor? Opposed?
A resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing one-mill tax levy for the purpose of fire protection services and payment of permanent full-time firemen pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section 5705-19I and 5705-191, and requesting the Summit County fiscal officer to certify the total current tax valuation of the city and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that levy and declaring an emergency.
And what's your pleasure?
I move, we passed and post, according to law, resolution number three, 2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Resolution three, number 2013, passes. And the next is right in line with that, which would be resolution number four, dash, 2013.
I'd like to offer resolution number four, 2013, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Mr. Martin?
It's supposed to be first.
It's just a first reading on that one, sir.
I'm sorry. I'd like to offer resolution number four, 2013, for its first reading by title only, please.
A resolution submitting the question of the renewal to an existing, of an existing one-mill tax levy for the purpose of fire protection services and payment of permanent full-time firemen pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, sections 5705-19I and 5705-191, and declaring an emergency.
All right. So we have a little explanation on, I'll do my best to explain this to you. First of all, this is not a new tax. A tax renewal means everything just stays the same as it was. The money that's generated from this tax is earmarked. It's designated money and it goes to your fire department. So it's all about the fire department. In order to get it on the ballot, we have to do certain things by a certain time. So number three, resolution three, we had to have three readings tonight so we can move forward with the process to get this on the ballot. The second one, resolution number four, 2013, gives us and gives you the ability, because it was held at a first reading, to let your feelings be known if you feel we shouldn't have a tax for our fire department. So this is not something we're trying to just ramrod through on you. Then I hope I've explained it to you so you understand.
I think I would also add that the reason there's the delay, we need to get the, what the one mill is going to generate. So the next ordinance actually has in its body the amount of money that will be generated by the one mill. So that's sort of what we're waiting for.
All right. And if you couldn't hear, Ms. Sisi, there's steps that we're following and there will be plenty of time for an hearing if anyone doesn't want this or would like to comment or speak in regards to this, one way or the other. Moving on. Ordinance number five, 2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number five, 2013, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Macedonia Recreation Center membership fee for improvement and maintenance of equipment.
Moving on to ordinance number six, dash, 2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance six, 2013, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending the Business Regulation Code by adding new chapter 794 entitled, Hotel and Motel Security and Safety.
Moving on to ordinance number seven, dash, 2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number seven, 2013, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia, a proposed amendment to sections 401, 402, 303B1, 408, 409, 410, 609, 705, 806, 905, 1004, 1102, 1204, 1306, 1307, 1402 of the charter of the city, restoring the number of councilmen to six, restoring the mayor's vote to break ties and related sections affected thereby.
Yeah, I just want to make a brief comment on this, Mr. Mayor. We had a resident commentator who talked about the fact that the council size should be reduced in size. And what this does is, this provides more of an opportunity for more persons in our community to participate as members of city council. And secondly, historically, it's been shown that with the six members of council, plus the mayor breaking the tie, that we've been able to make some very, very good decisions, namely, the bridge over Highland Road, namely, the expansion, the bridge over Route 82 and the widening of Route 82. So this is a chance to actually offer government to more residents with our. So this is a chance to actually offer government to more residents within our community, and also the success of Macedonia over the years, as well as the premier communities in Summit County, has been predicated on six council members and a mayor being able to break the tie, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to any motions or other legislative actions this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the police chief to accept on behalf of the City of Macedonia Police Department, a monetary donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from Elsie Dudley, Dud, Duty, or is it Duty?
Duty.
Elsie Duty, Bruce Road, Macedonia, I'm a thinker.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just want to make it known that she's been doing this every year of my career since I've been in council to the police department, so that doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, Elsie. All right, moving right along, we have correspondence.
There's one more, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
It was an add-on, and it was only written on his.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation of a Wii and a Playstation valued at one hundred thirty dollars for the senior center from the Macedonia Firefighters Association.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Chief. Our rec center, our recreation room in the basement, our community room is coming along fine. All right, are there any other motions or legislative actions before we move on that are missing? If not, we'll move on to correspondence for the clerk, please.
Yes, I was asked to read this. To Mayor Cookdown, on behalf of the residents of Macedonia, the Macedonia Longwood Manor Historical Society cites the following facts and requests a response from the mayor and finance director of the City of Macedonia. Facts: One, ordinance number forty-nine nineteen eighty-four accepted the property of Colonel William Frue Long for park and public purposes in accordance with and subject to the provisions of his last will and testament. Two, a motion on October tenth, two thousand and two city council, at a city council meeting of, excuse me, a motion of the October tenth, two thousand and two city council meeting that city funds would continue to be used to include utility payments, insurance coverage, and those monies necessary to maintain the manor house in its current condition. That motion carried unanimously. Three, the Longwood Manor Historical Society has obtained a legal opinion that the home would be considered real property to be maintained by the city in accordance with the will. Request: Longwood Manor Historical Society is requesting the mayor to direct the finance director to produce a report of all city funds used to maintain the Longwood Manor since October tenth, two thousand and two. We request that the report be completed within two weeks of receiving this letter, and that this report should be sent to the president of the Longwood Manor Historical Society. Please be advised, the report will be forwarded to a lawyer working with the Longwood Manor Historical Society. This letter is in an effort to do due diligence on legal questions pertaining to the maintenance of the house, and we are hopeful of the city's cooperation.
Ms. Sarrsisi, upon reading this letter and hearing you read it, Mr. Hanselak, I would like to ask you your opinion. The fact that they have attained legal counsel indicates to me that they are in contemplation of taking legal action. If they are in contemplation of taking legal action against our city, and in effect placing the city in a position where we have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to maintain the manor house, and perhaps neglect roads, our recreation center, traffic lights, things that are essential to the operation of our city, I really believe that from this point forward, the Longwood Manor Historical Society should communicate with the city exclusively through our legal department, since there is now a threat of legal liability or a reorganization of legal, of spending priorities within our community. I don't know how you feel about that, but it's just my feeling that the tone of this letter points out that they have consulted with legal counsel, and that this letter is an effort to do, they don't say to do diligence on legal questions, and that they talk about the fact that the answers generated pursuant to this letter will be forwarded to a lawyer working with the Longwood Manor Historical Society.
And, Mr. Martin, I agree with you to the extent that, in fact, the mayor, Andrew Ladd, passed that letter, or the law department this morning, will be following up on that aspect. The other aspect where certainly Mr. Evansy has the ability to contact public officials would not be on that item of threat litigation, but if there's continued working relationship with the building department on the use or activity permit, I believe that would be allowable and should go directly to that specific official. Same thing if they had any report for fire, or, you know, theft, or any access to the premises. The other thing that council should be thinking of, and that is, is that, you know, each committee, each, it's not a committee, it's a volunteer organization under our code, provides council with an application that has a stated purpose, and as far as I recall, because every year, every year, this particular organization did not have a stated purpose of obtaining monies in order to file litigation against the city of Macedonia, so that's something that council should be aware of, and perhaps at some point, at the appropriate time, if you review that application, make a decision with regards to the existence of that particular organization.
Well, that's what concerns me right now, that they have, according to this letter, that they have legal counsel, and that this organization now is acting on the advice of legal counsel in pursuing this information, and perhaps pursuing this punitive action against the city, and I'm not aware where it's in their charter that they are really authorized to do that, as you point out. And that's, that's the most distressing part of this letter at this point, because they are acting within the frame, and it was always my understanding also, that if there was a volunteer commu, committee within our city, that their first recourse would be our own law department. Now, if I'm mistaken on that...
I don't think that was contemplated, but...
I don't think it was contemplated, but certainly, I would think that any volunteer organizations that are chartered by the city, if they had questions like that, they could be submitted through the city to our legal department. And I'm just concerned about the intent and the consequences of this letter. Because I don't want the mayor, I don't want Mr. Ladd, anyone in our community to be submitting materials that are later going to be used as evidence in court against us that negatively affect the interests of the city and its residents.
I understand, we'll follow up with that.
Thank you, Mr. Hanselak.
What concerns me the most is that a volunteer committee that has given material and labor to a city-owned structure has merely notified that they have obtained a legal opinion, and it also says that they're going to forward this report to a lawyer who is probably partly paid or volunteering along with lots of other people who fix windows, who install beams, who cut grass and weeds. And I can't imagine any other city in the world that would look upon a volunteer group that is enhancing the city asset and not welcome them with open arms. The real question that I think we have that have not been established is, is the building got asbestos in it that needs to be removed? Is the ground soil around the building safe? Has it been tested? There's a few questions that keep coming up that are not being answered, and I think we need to do that. I think our building department should be cooperating, hugging these people, and helping them as they work very hard to enhance a public asset. I cannot imagine anybody not helping them, all right? But before you help them, you got to find out, is the building ready to be helped? Is the ground safe around it? As long as those questions are unanswered, I still do not know if there's asbestos in that building that needs to be removed. I've been told there is, I've even seen a document that says there is, but I don't know what we're doing about that. Also, is the ground safe around the building? Was the, were things put in the ground over the years with the fundays? If you got oil leaking in there, you got slime coming up? Was the basement properly done? Our service department knows what they did to that building, and our building department knows what they did to this building. It is entirely unacceptable that we have put up with this, as the mayor stated, twenty-nine years. If this is a city asset, then we should either fix it or remove it, one of the two. Let's make a decision.
The points you bring up are very valid, but actually, we have been bending over backwards because the manor house was condemned, is it four years ago now? All right, when a manor house is condemned, or any building within the city is condemned, Mike, it must be torn down by law within ninety days. And council and the administration bent over backwards, and the mayor actually makes the final call as far as the manor house is concerned, according to what I've been told. But the mayor's worked with council, council's worked with these people, and we have done a lot, a lot of things to help them, but we can't do it for them. There's a lot of things that have been suggested to them, there have been people sent to them. I can tell you their names after the meeting, because I'd rather not make it public knowledge because it is kind of personal, but they were turned away by the manor house society, and they could have got grant money. One of the things we have to keep in mind here is, yes, these people do things on the manor house, but what they're doing on the manor house, it still is a condemned building, and a condemned building must be torn down by law. The amount of time that's left for this to be fixed is a month, all right? So things are starting to get a little bit hairy now because we're getting down towards the end. So it's, it's, it's a very, very tough thing to do, and a very, very tough thing to proceed with, but if you'd like, you're welcome to come to my office, and I'll show you pictures of the asbestos. I can explain to you that in the days gone by, when that house was built, asbestos was used because they were drafty old houses. It was used extensively throughout that house. The house was heated with radiators, and behind every radiator is asbestos. What was the asbestos, besides being anti-fire, it was also in insulation. Back in the days when that was built, they didn't have much in the way of insulation, so there was asbestos-wrapped pipes. There still are asbestos-wrapped pipes in the wall. There's asbestos in the roof so that the heat don't go up onto the roof. And I can show you pictures of all that if you'd like. The point I'm trying to make here is we keep helping them, we do. If you want to overturn the ruling that the house is condemned, they have the right to appeal to the state. We gave them that right. We have told them what to do, we never hold a gun to their heads, we simply say we've got priorities. One of the things that the will did not do, and Colonel Long didn't have in mind, was to take care of the manor house. If he did, he probably would have left, what did they call it, Tom, an endowment?
Yes.
All right, so there was no money left for maintenance, no, nothing. The property was left with the, the way I interpret it, it was to be used for recreational purposes, was the only stipulation, no, no money-making or for-profit, something in there, could only be so much, but, but never was there anything about the house.
Outdoor recreation is what it said.
Outdoor recreation. So look at all the monies that were spent on outdoor recreation, right in according to what Colonel Long wanted. If Colonel Long said to me, "I want you to maintain that house," I would do whatever I could, but he didn't. In his will, he said to me, "Make that a recreational area for the people of Macedonia." So, Mike, I don't think we're fighting the manor house society, I think what's happening is they don't have the ability to do what would need to be done, and that's get federal funding. They don't have the ability to get funding, and we have suggested go with, what kind of petitions, Josephine?
Initiative petitions.
Initiative petitions, and go to the public, have them sign it. And once they sign it, we are obliged to put it on the ballot. Put it on the ballot, and if the people vote for it, fine. But instead, the very next meeting we have, we come back having a lawyer involved, and I have a problem with that, I do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I want to point out one other thing, too, about Longwood Park, Mayor. Longwood Park, I remember when it was first provided to us, and we had to discuss Longwood Park and planning commission. I think somebody mentioned at the time that it was the second-largest municipal park in the state of Ohio. And then it went on to say that it was the largest municipal park in the state of Ohio for a community of this size. Because it's extraordinary that the city has this much property for a community of this size. You normally don't have an opportunity to have that type of land, the number of acres that are really involved there. And one of the continuing, and Jim Kreevar can attest to this, and you could too, but to maintain that park, the absolute scope and size of it, the cost, it's very, very difficult for a community of our size. I, I, I know just getting started on the, when the summer rolls around, getting started on the mowing the lawn and maintaining, and think about this, the trails we have in that park aren't even maintained that well. And there's been complaints about that, Angela, and it's been discussed. And our rec center itself, that's why we're looking at additional fees there, because we even have enough money coming up for the benefit of our rec center. So you have a lot of competing, you have a lot of competing interests here, and I agree with the mayor that there's been, we've worked with the, with the various people who've tried to restore the manor house. I know the mayor thinks history is important, I think history is important, too, and I would like to see it succeed, but it's just really tough coming up with the type of money we need in this economy. I, 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 I've just, it's just really tough because there's not that much money around. I read an article in the Wall Street Journal today where government, if you can believe this, is thinking of coming back now on some of the tax benefits that senior citizens get. And it's a very, very, it's a very, very difficult economy, there's a lot of competition for dollars, and, I mean, a lot of people say to me, "I want to see North Freeway Drive, I want to see North Bedford Drive fixed," or, "Or South Bedford Drive fixed." You know, that's where they're, you know, that's why I feel so important that you have a ballot initiative, John, to go out and find out if people will support the manor house. I think you might be surprised if you present your case to them, that they will, but it's going to require an initiative, as Josephine's pointed out. But I think that's where the support comes from.
All right, moving on, next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. As of January... As of January 2013, the Northeast Ohio Regional Stormwater Districts, that's N E O R S D, it's hard for me to say those letters, Regional Stormwater Management Program goes into effect. The average homeowner will pay $5.05 per month, or $60.60 per year. The larger your home, resulting in a larger non-pervious surface, and that is being bigger, would make, mean that you will pay more. So impervious surfaces are things that water would run off of. On your home, you have impervious surfaces, like your roof, hopefully water don't run through it, or you'll have everything wet in your house. Your driveway, water can't go through the driveway. So they take all these areas, and they compute as to how much it's going to cost every single person, resident, businessperson, church in Macedonia. And we gotta pay it. We lost in court, we got concessions, you know, things will be better. Actually, if nothing else, we had them in court three years, and so that delayed this happening by three years. If it wouldn't have been for that, we would've had to pay this sooner. The money from your fees will be going to Cuyahoga County for a management program. This makes them in charge of our stormwater problems. This makes them in charge of our stormwater problems. In other words, if Indian Creek floods, it's up to the N E O R S D to unclog it or fix it so it doesn't flood. N E O R S D is in charge of the repairs. All of the information regarding the N E O R S D is available online on our Macedonia website, or you can go through my office if you don't have a computer, or your computer's as old as some of our computers are. Included in that information will be their websites and phone numbers necessary if you have stormwater problems on your property. In the past, a resident or business would call the city and say, "Help, we have a problem." Well, right now, you're supposed to call the N E O R S D. Believe me, that's not the way we wanted it, but unfortunately, that's the way it's going to be. How much money will be coming back to the community? There'll be some coming back, but over three-quarters of it will stay in Cuyahoga County, and projects will be done only that they authorize. So actually, if you think about it, they could get on our case if we would try and initiate a project in this city if they didn't want that project, or they had some other thing that they wanted to do before that. Do we have any say-so? Yes, we do. We have a very good person in our, our building commissioner who has been in negotiations with N E O R S D. As you would know, when this all came to a head, I was in the hospital, and Mike did a nice job of working with people in order to get us some projects at least thought about. Will those projects actually happen? Well, soon. I don't know what soon means in Cuyahoga County, okay? Soon to me means next week, okay? But in Cuyahoga County, soon could mean something else. We are going to have a meeting, and at that meeting, it'll be a public meeting, and people can come, and they can ask questions, and they can be told exactly what the N E O R S D is going to do. So watch for that announcement of when that meeting is going to be, because it's important to all of us.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we appeal this fee individually?
Yes.
Homeowner or business owner?
Good, good point. Yes, absolutely. All of these fees can be appealed, and we're working on right now, trying to get together a list of what things citizens could do, what things seniors can do, what things businesses can do. One of the biggest things is stormwater retention. So if there's any way possible that you can do some kind of retention on your water that flows off of the impervious surfaces, you can appeal your cost. One of the ways that that can be done is by putting a rain barrel in. I don't know if any of you folks have seen it, but people actually put barrels in their gutters, okay? That can get you maybe 50 cents a month, maybe a dollar a month, whatever it is. But if you keep coming up with things that retain the water on your property, you can reduce that bill. So you can find out what those things are right now, actually, just by going to these websites that we have listed on our website.
What happens if we don't pay?
Well, first of all, years ago, before the lawsuit, they threatened us with shutting off our Cleveland Water. And that was, to me, like extortion. I mean, how dare they? Tom?
If the individual doesn't pay, I'm sure it's assessed, put on the property tax duplicate, and then collect it at some point in time.
So it's, you know, it's pretty hard to get away from paying it. Can you protest it? Well, we sure tried, and we didn't get very far, but that doesn't mean a bunch of people can't get together and protest it and do whatever they would like. But we did spend three years in court with them, and we had our law department represent us very well. In fact, our law department was leading a group of law departments and lawyers from other communities in this fight. And we did well, but we didn't win. Because we were in a Cuyahoga court, might be one reason. At any rate, the first council meeting of the year is organizational, organizational, and that's when council, vice president, president are elected. You know what? I look forward to working with them and all of council in the year 2013. I'm hoping for a healthy year for all of us. Like Ken said, we've come so far in the city in just the last 10 years. I mean, there's people who come here to this day, and they're amazed when they look at what Macedonia has become and what we are becoming. We continue to grow, we continue to expand, and we continue to prosper. I would like to extend an offer, asking for cooperation from council. Let's all work together to continue the philosophy of doing that which is best for Macedonia. We need to put personalities aside for the common good. Thank you very much, and moving on to committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, there's a planning commission meeting on Monday at 5:30, and I'm glad Ms. Darrell will be there to handle it, because this will be the first time in about 25 years that I've not attended a planning commission meeting, at 5:30 Monday, p.m.
And I'll help Kayla get me the stuff that's going to be on planning, so I can review it.
Yeah, I may drop, I may drop it off tomorrow. I think I, I may even have it with me, I can't remember.
Okay, thank you.
I met with some people tonight, and I may have just neglected it, but I'm sure Mike will.
Mike's saying he'll take care of it.
We'll handle it.
Okay, thanks.
We'll handle it, so we'll get it to you tomorrow.
All right, thanks.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none, are there any department reports? Now, we're going to start tonight with Jim, but we got a different Jim.
Yes.
All right? We had Jim Kreevar for a lot of years, and now Jim DiGatano, who's been with the city, how many years, Jim?
Going on 21, 21 years.
You know what? This man knows this city like the back of his hand. He's been working for Macedonia in ways so that he increases the safety for his men. Very, very much concerned with that, and it is a big concern when you're fixing roads. He's very, very interested and knowledgeable in the trades. We're doing things now that we never did before. Yeah, we don't break up the branches anymore and turn them into mulch and spend all summer doing that. But now we spend time fixing catch basins, and fixing culverts, and fixing things that we would have to contract out, and doing them in-house, and doing a better job than may have been done by any contractor. So I'm very proud to introduce everyone tonight to Jim DiGatano, who is helping me because I have to take over as the service director, of course, now because the position's open. But I have a very trusted man acting in that position, and very, very qualified. Jim DiGatano.
Thank you, Mayor. For our report, I'd like to start by, we know we had, the last month of 2012, we had quite a bit of snowstorms, and during that period, we went through an estimated 1,400 tons of salt. Also, during that same time period, we did some stormwater projects. We completed three of them, actually, in December. On Saybrook, we repaired a 42-inch stormwater pipe. And also on Skyland, we did over 225 feet of regrouting pipe. And also on Bavaria, we did a complete tear-out of catch basin pipes and an apron over by design-moded plastics. We also are starting our coat patching on a daily basis. We are following the street guide, which is, so we will hit every street. Everybody's street will get hit, main, side streets. And right now, we've already gone through an estimated 10 tons of coat patch. And I'm asking anybody here, if you should find a hole, and they do pop up, just call the service department, and tell us where it's at, and we'll take care of it for you. We're also going to start, weather permitting, the trees along Summer Road, there's two dozen of them, they're going to start taking those down. I'm sure you're aware of that, Mayor. And also, I want to remind everyone that on Thursday, the 17th, which is next Thursday, we will be closing Ledge Road between South Freeway and North Freeway. And that's because we're going to be taking out the double-yellow lines, and we're doing that for the purpose of the railroad bridge underneath, try to help with the problem that they're having there. So we'll be taking those lines out. So the road will be closed. It's going to be aggravating, but we have to do that. And then finally, Mayor, just to add to what you were saying about the seniors, the community room will be ready next Thursday, same date, January 17. We'll have the community room ready, and we should be ready for the seniors.
And when he says it, he means it. To go back to the bridge on Ledge Road, boy, oh, boy, we've been getting so many complaints from people, and they're very, very concerned because of mirrors, believe it or not. The mirrors on cars are being ripped off because two cars are trying to go through there at the same time. Sometimes, one of them is a little bit left of center, and bam, well, it's a mirror. So what? I'll tell you, so what? It's 800 bucks for most of these mirrors today. They're remote-controlled, and oh my God, you break one of those things. I even think I remember a time one of our councilmen had a mirror break off.
That was mine.
Well, and more, two councilmen. All right? Or three.
The mirror smashes the glass, and now the driver has the glass flying across.
Your window came out.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, will they ever widen that? Will they ever think about widening that there, ever?
You know what? There, yeah, that would be bridge number three, and I'm very, very grateful that we've been able to get to bridge number two, and pretty soon, we're going to be done with that. The reason that one is going to be such a huge undertaking is because of the 271 overpass. And that's going to be a job that's going to take a gazillion dollars, and right now, money is tight for roads. Tomorrow, I will be meeting with the head of AMETS and spending time with them, pleading our case for monies for road repairs such as South Bedford, which is number-one priority right now and will be. And I'm meeting with Jason Sagerty. He is the, the top man at AMETS. And I plan on taking a little road trip with him and taking him on South Bedford, and showing him that there's a school there and all these things that need to be done.
Just walk down the sidewalk there.
Well, you know what? Jason and the rest of the, the people that control federal funding, okay? Now, sometimes this upsets me, Mike, because the federal funding that comes to there comes from our tax dollars for gasoline. All right? And, and I'm a little bit upset that that is used sometimes for bike paths. Now, I don't hate bike paths, but I think I need roads more than we need a bike path. But on the other hand, Mike, a bike path on that road...
Would be a great idea.
Wouldn't it?
Yeah.
So who knows? Maybe we can use what they're not giving us road money for, for the roads, but use it in another way, so one way or another, we get to where we want to be.
It's too dangerous when you're driving down that road. There are students walking in the street, there are residents walking in the street, and we're going to have somebody killed, and then we're all going to say, "Why didn't we do it?"
Yes.
And a bike path would be just fine.
Yes.
Even a temporary sidewalk.
Well, you know, we got a lot of things going for us. We got the school there, our park, we got Memorial Park right there in the corner. And you know what's nifty, and I've never done it, but I'd like to one of these days, is I'd like to walk from my house to Walmart. Why? Because there's sidewalks all the way. So if you have sidewalks, so many sidewalks now in the newer sections of Macedonia, that you can actually walk from our houses to Walmart if you wanted to, okay? I think bike paths might be a way that we might be able to get some more sidewalks, but not really sidewalks, on roads that have nothing.
Well, if anybody can get it done, you can, Mayor. I have confidence in you.
I'm going to try.
I voted for you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, now, we got a little bit off track, but the reason for the, taking out the center lines, we have new signs by the bridge, and we're saying to people, "This is very narrow." We're saying to people, "Go very slowly." And at one time, we were thinking about one lane, but we can't make it one lane. So what we're trying to do is encourage people to go slow, don't go through at the same time another vehicle does, if you're worried about your $800 mirrors. Because once you break it off, the city can't help you. But we are trying to discourage it from happening again by trying to encourage people to go through there and alternate.
Well, Mr. Mayor, even with a lot of the people are breaking, the mirrors are getting all messed up, a lot of trucks today are wider now. So a lot of cars and trucks think that they can fit through there. So I mean, that would be, you know... So I mean, that would be, you know, eventually down the road, trying to maybe see, even get the state to help or something about because of the accidents and stuff that happened there.
Well, you also have children go through that bridge.
Oh, I know, I see it all the time.
So yes, there's a whole big bunch of reasons why that bridge shouldn't be there. But in the meantime, this is an effort on our part to try and discourage people from going through and getting their mirrors busted off or having an accident where glass flies in their face. It's just terrible. And just think, '82 wasn't much different than that four years ago. It's amazing. We don't even remember that anymore. Thank you very much for a job well done. You mentioned salting. And I would like people to know that Jim comes up to me every morning and we talk. And one of the things Jim is going to do is reinstitute salting our streets 100 percent. I don't know if you remember, but for quite some time, we had a mess because the cost of salt went right through the roof. So we were salting intersections, corners, and hills. Now Jim tells me we're going to get more salt on the streets. Also, Jim has taken the initiative to go to our fire chief and to our police chief to find out, how can we do this better? So Jim has come up with the idea, when we have a storm coming, don't be surprised if they aren't there salting before the storm hits. Good work, Jim. Thank you. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. We have a developer interested off of Girl Scott Way. They're going to be meeting with Mayor and myself. They're looking at multifamily rental units. It is an R2, it's zoned for that. As we get drawings and they start with our preliminary work, we will have it presented to the planning commission, but the mayor and I are going to meet with them first to find out what they're looking at, you know, if it's going to be attached, detached, is it going to be multi-rise, what they're considering doing in that area.
Is that Simon Kaplan's property?
Yes. I believe so.
That, you know, rental units have been the source of great controversy in this community.
Yes.
And I remember a particular time when Anna Hayduk.
It was a no vote.
Led a strong, strong contingent of people against that proposal. And many council people lost their seat because of that back then. But the idea of having rental units in this community is very negative.
And we're going to, we're going to meet with them and we're going to see what, what they're proposing.
And this is not to be disrespectful, okay? But our job is to meet with them and then bring it to the various portions. Remember that the city's responsible, I am responsible for the city and I don't have any other choice but to hear what they have to say and to follow up and take it through the steps. Even though, you know, right now, you would say to me, no, we don't want no part of it. I can't just say to them, no, don't come here, or no, you can't do that before they, when they have the right to do it. Because that's one of the few places in Macedonia that zoned R2, not R1. All right? So now we got a can of worms. But Mike and I are just keeping you informed. Not telling you, we want this to happen.
Right.
But keeping you informed.
Mr. Hanslack, could you please do me a favor? Could you see if council has the ability to rezone that property from R2 to solely R1? Thank you.
Okay.
And the rest of your report.
Okay, thanks. We're looking into it. We will be, Dennis, as you know, is a registered architect, we are going to be critiquing the plans quite a bit. Whatever they present to us, we're going to make sure that it meets our standards, our look-alike standards as well. One and four is going to be a big thing, that every one and four units will have to be different, so. We're busy working on the year-end reports for the totals of building, engineering, and zoning. Some of these reports go to just a few, US Census, state commercial, state residential, McGraw Hill, Summit County, as well as the report to council. Ryan Holmes will be coming in this year and have not stopped building in Macedonia. And they are keeping us quite busy. They bought up all the lots in Woodland Point subdivision off of Twinsburg Road. So that's the next area that they're moving into to, to build homes. And also, council will see a new ordinance allowing for rain barrels and alternate stormwater carrying devices. Right now, our ordinance reads that everything has to be tied into the sewers. But with NEORSD coming in and fee credits, we're going to open that up and try to get rid of that ordinance and allow for alternative ways so that people could receive some of their credits. And then I just want to congratulate everybody on council with their new positions. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Angela.
Thank you. Just a reminder, I had made this announcement prior to the holidays, but we surveyed our members for the entire month of November. And as of the beginning of this month, we did expand our Sunday hours. So they are currently 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, which people seem to be very happy about. So we're happy to be able to make that change. We have a bus trip planned for Columbus Hollywood Casino on February 15th. I'm sorry, February 5th. The deadline for registration is January 19th. Second Saturdays continue into 2013. This is a program we implemented last year. The second Saturday of every single month, we open the rec center from 7:00 to 9:00 PM after hours for fifth and sixth graders. So they can come in, play games, play video games, swim. We have activities for them. And Chick-fil-A also participates in that, so they get to win a lot of prizes. We hold a lot of contests and the kids really, really enjoy that. Lastly, for us at the, in the recreation department, this is our first sign of spring, if you can believe it or not. Our spring youth soccer registration begins January 17th. So that's usually a date a lot of people in this community want to know about. That is for boys and girls ages four through 14. That is for this spring. So it does begin shortly. If you need more information, we have information on our website and we also have information at our front desk. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We're compiling the last reports for 2012. I did want to report that we did collect overall in the general fund, $6.9 million in income tax, which would be a record, and also $187,400, $187,943 in our joint economic development district, which is the JED, which is we, our income tax revenue sharing with Northfield Center Township. So that was up also. Some of the other highlights, inheritance tax, we collected $148,000 and that'll be phased out through the state next year. So typically, we did receive about $150,000 to $200,000 each year in inheritance tax, but the change of state law is going to, this will be the last year where you're going to collect that. EMS revenues were up slight from last year. We collected a total of $286,000. And one of the other highlights was a membership at the rec center was $523,000. Overall, have a complete comprehensive report. I wanted to report also that I look forward to working with Jim DiGatano in the interim. And he's got a great support staff with Sherry and Sharon there to help guide him through the next few weeks until finally a position will be filled. But Jim's easy to work with. I worked with him as he was a working foreman. He brings a lot to the table and he's a hard worker. I hope that he's probably going to be a strong candidate for the final position. I was looking and I found that there is a ODNR recreational trails grant. And I talked to Angela about it and I'll talk to our, also Shane about it. You're going to have a parks committee meeting. One of the things that I thought about applying for, the deadline is February 1st and we're in the process of doing that, and Jim provided me some pictures of the, the old playground, the wooden playground equipment that we had at Sugar Bush that they tore out last summer when we revamped the other playground. We didn't have enough funding to do that. We spent $85,000 on the new playground equipment. But we took out Sugar Bush because it was starting to be a hazard and the insurance company recommended because it was an old wooden structure and some other area, it was starting to fall apart, nails exposed. So the street department went ahead and took that out. And I'm hoping that maybe ODNR grant, it's 75 percent matching grant, that we might be able to get that replaced this year. So we'll try our hardest on that. Then there's another Nature Works grant that's due May, May 1st and we'll look into maybe submitting something for them also. But that's all I have at this time.
And that was all good stuff.
Thank you.
Very, very good. We're in the black, very, very strongly in the black as far as the city's concerned. Rec center's in the black, which is not the case in most communities or a lot of communities. It's all good stuff. And you know what? A lot of that revolves around having a good finance director. So thank you.
Thank you. I want to just report overall that our ending balance, and that's kind of one of the benchmarks that we always look at, the beginning year balance was $6,208,000 and we ended $6,276,000. So roughly about $65,000 ahead where we were last year. And also significant about that was the reports that I've given council before about the infrastructure and the capital improvements that we spent, close to $1,000,000.4. And also, we're able to put $500,000 this year in the emergency reserve fund, which, you know, I hope we don't have to tap into, but at least it's there. So with that emergency reserve fund, as well as that retirement fund that we established last year, council did, we have $1 million that legislatively can't be touched unless it's a true emergency. So I'm thankful that council took that, took that approach and put away that additional $500,000.
Yeah, well, that's all tax dollars at work in a positive way.
Yes.
Sometimes I love when we're able to give back to our residents what they're giving us in that extra, that in the levy that we passed just a brief time ago. And we give it all back, but we give it back in asphalt and, and better safety and, and better improvements throughout our whole city. So you're, you're doing a great job, young man.
Thank you.
Tim?
Yes, Mayor. All I have is, we closed out the year 2012 with 1,495 calls, down just 12 calls from 2011 from 1507. So we're staying pretty, pretty steady, right around 1,500 calls, with just, just over about four calls a day if you average it out. That's all I have.
And that's all good stuff because we get nothing but good reports. All right, Tom, you got anything?
Nothing.
Moving on to old business, new business?
Very briefly, Mayor. I have been in communication with the University of Akron, a number of departments that are recruiting students to come and help survey our park, find out what kind of plants we have, biology majors, earth science majors, and even surveying and mapping majors to come and help us identify what we have in our park.
Great. While we're on that subject, Ken State has been in and we've had students working with my office as far as our government process is concerned, because I guess the reputation of Macedonia is growing. So that's all good stuff.
It is good stuff.
All right. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming to our council meeting.